All right, I'll call the meeting to order.
Oh, but no, yeah, whatever you do, I'm, I'm.
Do a quick roll call vote before we do the flag salute. Counselor Offelman.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Counselor Youngman?
Here.
Counselor Merritt?
Present.
Counselor Papke?
Here.
Counselor Law, did you make it? So he, he was probably not going to be here, but he was going to try to call in. So I'm present. All right, please rise for the flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Forrester, are there any additions to the agenda?
We do have one change tonight, Mayor, and that is ordinance number 1264, granting an utility, electric utility franchise and utility easement to Pacific Corp. We have sent that off to them for their review. Their legal team's a little bit slow. We were made aware of that when we sent it to them, that they might need a little bit more time. And we have not heard back from them, so we're going to give them another week or two to, to get back to us. So we will postpone this to the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a request of a little conversation time during, before counselor, council business to discuss auctions with dollars that may be coming to us from the federal government.
Okay.
Thank you.
So. Before your appointment or after?
I would put it before. Yeah, I just go.
And you, Counselor Offelman, you're going to speak to that or start that conversation?
I just have some questions to ask and hopefully the staff has some ideas that we can, for what may be available to us and how we might be able to use them.
Okay, perfect. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Hope everybody's had a chance to read the consent agenda and I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Counsel Youngman. I will move to approve the, the agenda, the consent agenda.
This is Counsel Hutchinson. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Eric Dunn, I'll do roll call vote. Counselor Offelman?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Papke?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Counselor Law, you still absent? Okay. Right, passes unanimously. Move on to council business and Counselor Offelman.
Yeah, it, it appears that with the legislation that may be passed by the, the House and signed by the president, there may, may be some dollars readily available, and I'm assuming that some of those dollars could be used by the city for shovel-ready projects, but I'm not sure possibly our engineer could speak to that. And I'm also wondering about how that could be utilized for the, addressing the flood mitigation potential for the Ochko Creek area.
So I'll speak to that, Eric Klon, City Engineer. We haven't specifically heard of the mitigation that would be coming to the city. However, we are trying to get prepared for some that would come. We've started design on the Combs Flat Extension. That could be a wonderful amenity for the community. And, you know, we're watching these things quite closely. I'm guessing it's going to be more along the lines of rent assistance and utility assistance. But with that said, we really haven't heard too much so far as far as like a stimulus package to get the economy going. You know, obviously, we're not seeing anything like that.
What I have heard so far is that a portion of the dollars are going to be earmarked for infrastructure. And I know that it was important to you and extremely important to us to have the Combs Flat Peters Road piece in place for, as a shovel-ready project. And thank you for doing that because that, that's highest on our list. But I was just wondering if there were any other options that we might be able to tag on besides, should there be sufficient dollars for it?
Yeah, I, I just add to that, Counsel, Councilman Offelman, that we have reached out to BJ Westland and of course, we speak to Nick quite regularly with Walden's old office. Why can't I think of the new children's Cliff, Cliff Benz? Thank you, Mayor. Anyway, and I have a call into Jacob Egler along those same lines. We're also looking at how local generation would provide a resiliency factor for, you know, emergency mitigation, whether that's a flood or a, or a cascade event. So we have briefed out, we have had a discussion with BJ. He's going to get back to us on what he can learn about this new legislation and programs that might be able to be leveraged on those efforts as well. So I just wanted to keep you advised, Counsel Offelman, that, you know, we have, we have reached out to that federal delegation to see what they can tell us and what we can learn from that.
Thank you.
Is there any other council business before we move on to the next one?
Mayor Bibi?
Yes.
So I don't know if this is where this belongs, but I just want to say, after taking that tour of the new police department, how impressed I am with that and what a wonderful job they have done with developing that and ensuring that there's enough growth for a number of years ahead and just a fabulous job.
Thank you very much.
Kudos Dale and James Wilson for all that you've done.
All right. Counselor Hutchinson and Counselor Offelman, thanks for bringing those, those two things up to us. Move on to appointment of Marv Sumner to the Budget Committee vacancy. Steve Forrester.
Yeah, and, and we introduce you to Marv on a couple of different angles, one being the basketball effort, obviously, and I think we'll have a little update from Eric on that later. And I'd ask Lisa Morgan, if, if you're on Lisa, I'm sure, do, would you have anything to add as far as Marv's application or anything of that nature, Lisa?
I have nothing to add except for we have completed the formality of the application and review of it.
And so we are ready to go to council for a vote for an appointment?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and, you know, I can just vouch for, for Marv as being close to our community for, for a long time. Worked at the bank here for a number of years, has family here. He participates since his retirement on on the rodeo board is our, is our treasurer. And he's just a heck of a nice fellow, very, very professional gentleman, brings a lot to the table. And we, in my opinion, are, are fortuitous to have an opportunity to bring him on board as a budget committee member. I think Marv is listening, but does anybody have any questions of me or Lisa regarding Marv or anybody else on staff? I know Eric, you spent some time with Marv. If anything, if anybody else would like to say anything on Marv's potential appointment, that would be the time.
I guess I, I would say I appreciate his positivity. A lot of times we hear people complain and he came to, he came to us with opportunity for the basketball court. So I think that's, that's wonderful. Try to make things better. Don't complain about it.
Fine solutions.
This is Steve Offelman. I've known Marv for a number of years and I, I would strongly support his filling into that vacancy.
Thank you, Steve.
I just, I, I would just say that I appreciate that he stepped up and wants to fill the vacancy and continue serving locally.
It, it cost, it cost me three dozen subway cookies, but I got, I got him hooked. So, yeah.
I would have too.
This is Liz Judy and I'm, I just want to say thank you, Marv. I've known Marv for a long time also, and I look forward to having him on the Budget Committee. Thank you.
All right, so in this appointment, we need, do we need to vote?
I, I believe so. Jared Reed, we do need to have a council vote on this. Or, I assume?
That's correct.
This is Steve Offelman. I will move Marv Sumner's name forward for the, filling the vacancy on the Budget Committee.
This is Counsel Merritt. I will second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Marv Sumner to the Budget Committee vacancy. Any further discussion with council? Right, hearing that, I'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Offelman?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Papke?
Aye.
And I vote aye myself, passes unanimously. Welcome aboard, Marv.
Yep, congratulations, Marv.
All right, we'll move on to the staff reports and requests. City manager report, Steve Forrester.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start out tonight with COVID news. I'm sure we have all heard that today the state announced that Cook County will be moving to the low-risk status from high-risk just two weeks ago. The city, but we will be working with Cook County Health to review and refine the city's COVID mitigation policy as related to how we conduct city business. We will keep the council and the staff apprised of any changes as they develop. This is very good news. Also, a quick council reminder, our ZTELL with our state legislatures will be held this Thursday, starting at 7:10 a.m. If there are any council members that would like to participate this Thursday, please let Lisa Morgan know if you're interested in attending and we can provide the Zoom information. I know, Mayor, you participate regularly and I think maybe Steve Offelman as well. So certainly welcome to join. I also wanted to let the council know how sorry I am and I apologize for having to counsel the strategic training session yesterday evening. When it became clear to us that three and possibly four council members were not going to be able to attend, we knew that the effectiveness of the session would be compromised. And therefore, we will be rescheduling this session over the next few weeks. We'll try to get it quite quickly, but it'll probably take a couple of weeks as we've got some issues with spring break and some travel and some other things going on with, with not only our staff and council, but also with Manny and Kale with CrestCon. So again, I apologize for that, but we need to have, we need to have all the counselors there if at all possible to be effective. So we'll work on that one. From the public work side, just a, just a quickie, Eric had his gang out there, Scott and his crew out there in front of City Hall today with a dump truck and backhoe working around the trees. And basically, we're repairing some tripping hazards there where the, where the trees have, the tree roots have thieved up the sidewalk concrete and caused some tripping hazards. So we'll be taking care of those issues. On the police department side, Chief Dale, as you well know, have some, has tours scheduled for council. And just a reminder, Lisa can help coordinate if you have not been able to sign up for a tour. In the event we have some, the dates and times that we have do not work for you, don't worry, Chief Dale will set up a tour to accommodate your schedule. So one way or the other, if you'd like to go see that before we move in, we can make that happen. And, and Chief Dale just wanted to make sure that council knew that. And then finally tonight, for Metal Lakes, Metal Lakes Director Zach Lambert wanted to let the council know that the irrigation upgrade construction is back underway with crews working out at Metal Lakes as we closed the day today, but they were out there today. And Zach is confident that we can expect that project to complete sometime around mid-April. So another, another few weeks and we have that wrapped up. So they got a good, good start last fall and got to work a lot longer than they thought, had weather that cooperated. So getting that wrapped up by mid-April will ensure that we have a great opportunity for a wonderful season. That does conclude my report. Is there any questions of me before I turn it back over to Mayor Bibi who has a few words? Any questions? Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
I just wanted to let all the counselors know that we received the League of Oregon City calendars and I put one in everybody's mailbox. Patty sent those to us.
The wall, big wall calendars, right? Yeah, that's awesome.
With all the League of Oregon City dates. For all the scheduled dates.
Good.
That's all I had on that. All right, basketball courts update, Eric Klon.
Good evening, Eric Klon, City Engineer. I believe James Wilson will be pulling a PowerPoint up to help us explain this opportunity. At the last council meeting, as you'll remember, Marv Sumner came with a potential opportunity to reconstruct the basketball courts there at Ochko Park. So if you'll remember, it's about a $60,000 project. He asked for council support for the project and basically we were curious as to what support would mean. Um, who else would participate? And what would that contribution from the city of Prinville look like? So I, along with Scott Smith, sent out an email to the school districts, the Parks, Parks Direct Department, the representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, representatives from the county, just trying to see who would be interested, what they could contribute and what that commitment from the city of Prinville would look like. So we put together a tentative budget for the council to consider. And it would break down like this. So Marv's total cost was about $60,000. A big component of that was to remove and replace the asphalt. He had that at about $30,000. So we're proposing that the city could remove that asphalt and prep it. We would ask Taylor Northwest to come in with their laser level to level it up to make sure we got good slope. The cost to pave it would be about $13,000. Matt Weederhold, I'd reached out to Matt as well. Our railroad manager, he reached out to McCall Oil and they agreed to donate all of the oil that would be needed for that asphalt. So that's about $5,500. Scott Smith has spoken with Tri-County, the local paving company, and they said that they would definitely help us. We don't know if that would be pave it all, you know, if they're getting the oil for free, but we think that'd be about $5,000. And there's potential that the city might have to pick up some remainder. So that would be about $2,500. So next slide. For that remainder, at $30,500, Parks Direct, they have $15,000 in their budget that they could participate with. The Chamber of Commerce is going to discuss this on this Thursday. The school district is interested in participating. Today, the county contributed or agreed to contribute $2,500. Then obviously, others might participate. So that would be like service clubs like the Kiwanis or the Rotary. Next slide. And in the future, one of our council members, Ray Law, had talked about lights and things like that. So that would probably be a future project that Parks could include in their budget if they knew it was coming. And obviously, the city always is interested in helping who we could dig the ditches or do whatever we need, we would be needed to do. So I think right now we're trying to put a budget together and we would ask the council to consider allowing the Public Works Crew to remove and prep, move the asphalt and prep it. That would be about $5,000 if we use all of our loaded rates. So these are the pretty high rates that we use when we do grants. So, you know, for instance, we have a dump truck at $55 an hour or whatever it is, and then contribute up to $2,500 to make it pay. This would be tentative. It would be dependent upon the other organizations coming through, but this is a lot of great support and I'm pretty excited that we might have five or six different organizations coming together to make this happen. And these pictures are from last week. We were out there and these two gentlemen were playing and they said it would be great to have some basketball courts that didn't have the cracks that trapped their wheels. So I apologize for my voice, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And then Scott, please contribute anything that I missed.
The only thing that I would say, Eric, is one of the Centaurigan striping contractors that provided some free striping for the Steens Pillar parking lot that we participated in has committed to helping, helping get the striping done at a very reasonable or very discounted price.
So tonight, we would be asking the council to consider a donation of up to $2,500 that might be zero. And then just allow the Public Works Department to support this project. If that were the case, we would take that back to the group and see how other funds come in and see if we could put this project together.
Eric, would this be coming out of our council, the council fund?
That, yes, potentially that could come out of your council donation fund.
Okay.
I want to thank Eric and, and Scott for taking the bull by the horns and moving this project forward. It's a great project for the, for the city. And I appreciate all of the effort that's gone into it. So I would support moving that forward with a 25, up to a $2,500 contribution from the city council fund.
Was that a motion?
Putting that in the form of a motion, yes.
This is, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to support the in-kind donations and up to $2,500 for the basketball court updates or upgrades. Is there any further council discussions before we vote?
This is Counsel Hutchinson. So I, what is left on the council budget then if we use the 2,500 there? Cause we used it for one other project earlier this year too. So do we know that?
I can, Liz, can you help me out there? Can we look up that real fast?
Yeah, I can look that up in, in just a second here.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I believe there's quite a bit of funds left. You guys haven't done much with that since COVID.
Yep.
I, I believe that the first part of the dollars were, were given to COVID for 2020. And I, I'm not, I don't think that you guys have spent any money since that.
I believe.
I'm pulling it up here.
I believe we put $5,000 into assistance, financial assistance for utilities with the expectation of an additional five if we needed it.
Oh, you might be right about that.
A lot of that was refunded though luckily by the, the feds.
Counselor Hutchinson, does that answer your question?
I think Liz is getting a number three.
I thought Liz said, okay, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so year-to-date, you've spent, or excuse me, 2021, you've spent $5,000 and you spent 15 in, in let's see. In 2020. So you have 10,000.
Yeah, $10,000. That's the number that I had in my mind. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Right. So did we have any further discussion with council? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Offelman?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Papke?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Thank you for, for that, even though I'm not much of a basketball player. It, it still is needed. And one of those gentlemen in that picture happens to be my next door neighbor who's played in the Paralympics in basketball. So I think.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all so much. And I apologize next time whenever we talk about your budget, we'll have the numbers ahead of time.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? All right, hearing that, we'll move, there's no ordinancees. We'll move on to resolution. Resolution number 1476, authorizing intergovernmental agreement for Crook-Jefferson Emergency Rental Assistance Project. Andrew Spreadborough?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Andrew Spreadborough, Deputy Director with Neighbor Impact. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of a request in front of the council for approval of a resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. The parties of that agreement would be the city of Prinville, city of Madras, Cook County, and Jefferson County. And this IGA is related to a proposed Crook County-Jefferson County joint application for community development block grant funding, funding from Business Oregon to support a rental assistance program to benefit low and moderate income households who have been impacted by the COVID crisis. This specific request, the, the kind of the proposed collaborative would be eligible for up to $600,000 for rental assistance purposes. I think you, I think you're aware of and familiar with the Community Development Block Grant Program, but this is one that cities and counties have to apply for directly. The city of Madras has agreed and volunteered to serve as the applicant for this project. We're not asking the city of Prinville to take on a formal role in, in this case. So the city of Madras would be the grant applicant, be responsible for the various rules and responsibilities and manage the, the, the grant. Neighbor Impact would be a sub-recipient and would actually operate the rental assistance program through our housing stabilization program. The proposed IGA is a required application component and it, it does two things really. It establishes the the proposed project geography. Again, this would be all of Cook County and all of Jefferson County outside of the Confederated Tribes of Born Springs. And it also demonstrates coordination between governments that, that you all agree that this is a, a funding source you want to pursue and that there is a need. If awarded, this, this funding would be available again to low and moderate income households who have documented that they've been impacted by COVID and have rent arrearsages, past due notices and so forth. The payments would be made on behalf of the eligible approved applicants. They would go directly to landlords or property owners on their behalf. The funding can pay up to six months of arrearsages for eligible households depending on need. And going back to the beginning of when COVID set in, April of 2020. Again, this would be operated by Neighbor Impact. We would operate it through our housing stabilization program. We have a existing rental assistance program that this would be folded into more or less. And in terms of the process and timeline, again, this is a, an application that will need to be submitted by the city of Madras. It's a competitive process. No guarantee that it'll be approved. We plan to package up and submit the application in April. So I'll pause with that. Be happy to discuss this further if you have specific. So I'll pause with that, be happy to discuss this further if you have specific questions.
Andrew, this is Patricia Youngman. I have one question. Will those funds be specifically going to Creek County and Jefferson County only?
Yeah, exactly. And so this, this IGA again establishes that project geography. Anyone who applies, there are certain eligibility criteria, including income, of course. But one is also geography. They do have to reside in Crook or Jefferson Counties. I mentioned it, they need to be outside of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. That's just because the tribes, this is, this is CDVG funds through the state of Oregon's program that supports non-metropolitan, non-trivial areas of the state. So the tribes get their own direct allocation of CDVG. And so that's why that geography is sliced off. They're just not eligible for this funding. But other than that, yeah, it would be restricted to Crook and Jefferson County.
Thank you, that, this is just wonderful.
Andrew, I'd like to thank you for bringing this in front of us, especially the last year, how, how hard this has been on the entire nation, but you know, especially our area. So thank you for bringing this. If there's no, no further questions for Andrew, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1476.
This is councillor Hutchinson. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1476.
I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 1476. Is there any discussion before we vote? Hearing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Councillor Uffelman?
Aye.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councillor Youngman?
Aye.
Councillor Merritt? Councillor Papke?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Andrew, thank you for, for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks.
I'm not saying the councillors have anything else to bring up, but I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is councillor Youngman. I'd like to recognize Creek County Health and all the wonderful things they've been doing out at the fairgrounds. I've heard nothing but positive things and so just wanted to do a shout out for them.
Thank you for that. Sounds like it is a pretty busy time there. Anything else for the council? We're still, still waiting on a motion to adjourn.
This is.
No move. All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.